Are we all set to open the meeting? Good evening and welcome. I'm Jean McKnight, Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations. It is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting does have a hearing on the agenda. But the applicant has asked to have the hearing continued. So other than having the applicant speak to that and us taking a vote on that, I don't expect there will be public participation. Unless, of course, the planning board decides to reopen any hearing, which it could do. So first we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ted Owens.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
So all five of the planning board members are here. And next I'll introduce a planning department and other town staff. Planning Director Lee Newman.
Here.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Cle.
Here.
And our technical support staff, who is also staff to the Conservation Commission, Clay Hutchinson.
Here.
Yes, thank you. And I'll introduce others as each agenda item is reached. Now, for those participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. And all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. And the ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. And when persons speak, even if they have been introduced, it's helpful if they say their name again for the public. All votes will be by roll call. So the first item on our agenda is a request that we approve and a request that we determine whether a certain change. Oh, excuse me. Before I move on to our first item on our agenda, we have two votes we usually take just to be sure of any technical difficulties. So I see a motion that if technical difficulties arise, oh, let me ask our planning director. Lee, should any continuation be to March 16th or March 23rd?
March 23rd.
Yes. So I need a motion if any technical difficulties arise that prevent us from continuing this meeting, that the meeting be, per that vote, continued to March 23rd at 7:15 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call the roll. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye. And then I have had technical difficulties where my voice is not heard properly and there's an echo. If that should happen, we customarily take this vote that if the chair has technical difficulties and has to leave the meeting and then come back to the meeting, in that period of time, the vice chair shall act as chair.
So moved.
So moved and do a second.
Second.
And so I'll call the roll on that. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
I think.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And Mr. Alpert is the vice chair. And the chair is aye, so we've taken care of our.
Was considering voting no for that reason, but.
All right. We got our technical stuff taken care of, so now we do move on to the request for a change in a second plan special permit. And that is permit number 200906 for the Needham Farmers Market. And the location of the operations of the Needham Farmers Market is in front of our town hall at 1471 Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. And to speak to that, I'll recognize Mr. Friedman, of course. Jeffrey Freeman, who is the president of the Needham Farmers Market. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Jean. Needham Farmers Market has applied for renewal of its special permit for 2021 with two changes or additions. The first is, of course, that the term will be updated to run from June 13th to November 21st, 2021, on Garrity's Way in a small part of the Town Common. The location is the same as last year. DPW has notified us that it does not plan to renovate the Town Common this year. So that freed up last year's location for us for this year. The market will continue to apply the COVID-19 protocols involving health and safety at its markets as required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Needham Board of Health, and the Needham Health Department. The second change is to add two artists and live music at its markets. We've had that in the past. Not last year due to COVID-19 pandemic. Governor Baker, under his shutdown rules, prohibited these two activities. Later in the year, he allowed them, and the Board of Health and the Health Department followed suit. Needham Farmers Market, I just wanted to assure everybody that, you know, these rules can change during the year, of course, and depending upon severity of COVID-19. So Needham Farmers Market will comply with all state and town of Needham requirements throughout our season, including, of course, the Board of Health and the Health Department. And in fact, we work closely with them. So, you know, there's good communication. And if there are any problems, you know, we certainly try to solve them and work it out with the Health Department. We request that you approve the application for renewal of the special permit for 2021. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer them. And I have also submitted a letter in support of these changes and the special permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. And what we have is we have your application for de minimis changes, aligning those, the extension that you're seeking. And attached is the the lease or license, the license from the town to allow you to operate for this extended year. And also, I want to mention that we received two communications regarding this from Tara Gurdish of the Board of Health, an email to Lee Newman and Alexandra Cle dated February 26th, saying, we actually just covered this topic, that is, this extension. I read the Farmers Market at our February Board of Health meeting, held on February 12th, 2021. And she types the Board of Health comments that she took directly from the Board of Health minutes. Discussion ensued on whether music should be required. And it was the option of the board that a decision on live music will be made closer to the date of commencement and an assessment of COVID-19 precautions. So just to clarify, I note that the decision does allow for live music. I think it allows for two, let me just just see about the live music. Live music and two artists are asked for to be permitted at the Farmers Market. But on condition that any rules and regulations of Governor Baker and the Needham Board of Health allow it. So even if it is allowed here, it would only actually happen to the extent and in conformance with the Board of Health's rules. Is that correct, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, that is correct. And that is the operating procedure that we have, of course, with the Board of Health and the Health Department. And I note this actually in my supportive, supporting letter to the board. So we discussed this back around, I think, since emails back and forth between the Health Department. And they indicated that it's a good plan to stick with last year's rules for now, and we can adjust as we get closer to the market if things change. That's from Diana Acosta, the Health Department Environmental Agent. And then Tara Gurd, who was also on that email, she agreed with that. So basically, you know, the email that you're looking at now is consistent with what they told us at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. Then there's only one other communication, and that is dated today from John Schiffer, our police chief, saying the police have no issues with this.
Good.
So I'll ask our planning board members if they have any question or comment. Mr. Owens.
No comments or questions.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs.
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Block.
No, thank you.
Mr. Alpert.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm all set.
All right. So our decisions on something like this, what's referred to as a de minimis change, are two parts. One is to deem the requested change de minimis. And the other is to grant the change or allow the change to the special permit.
I'd be happy to move that we, first of all, that we treat this as a de minimis change.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion made by Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Block to treat this request as a de minimis change. I'll call the roll, Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye. So we move to the requested relief, and we also have a decision. So I don't know if we want to include in the motion, the approval of the decision. But.
Well, unless anyone wants to object, I'm happy to move that we approve the requested relief and adopt the draft decision before us without change.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Jacobs, seconded by Mr. Block to grant the requested relief and approve the decision as before us without change. So I will call the roll, unless there's any further discussion. Is there further discussion? No, okay. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
The chair is aye, so that request for another year is approved unanimously. And I hope you have a good year, Mr. Friedman, with your Farmers Market that the town so much enjoys.
Thank you very much to the whole board.
Thanks.
Best to block.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So we're right on time for what was on our agenda for a public hearing. What we have received, what we have a copy of is an email from Judge Jenta dated today to our planning director Lee Newman regarding 390 Grove Street. And saying, as of last night, the owner of 390 Grove Street and her neighbors reached an agreement relative to the property. In order to effectuate that agreement, both sides have agreed to temporarily table and suspend the pending subdivision application. Oh, therefore, you're receiving a letter later today jointly asking to continue the hearing and vote until April. I wanted to give you a heads up. I don't seem to have the letter. Maybe I somehow missed it coming in.
Madam Chair, the letter. Received, and it's in our pack, and it's officially in the packet that's on the website with our packets, and it is signed by both Mr. Jenta and Mr. Lianfall.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Alpert. So given that, unless I ask Mr. Jenta if he wishes to have anything to say about this, otherwise ask for a motion that this be continued, this hearing be continued to April 20th, and that the action deadline be continued to May 31st, 2021. Is there anything you wish to add about that, Mr. Jenta?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the email covered it, so unless there are any questions, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
All right.
I just have a procedural question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Between last meeting and this, we asked for an opinion of zoning, of town council on zoning issue regarding this matter. And I understand it was received, and it's been reviewed by the board members. Do we need to do anything to make sure that letter is now officially part of the record?
Yes, that's a good idea to at least recognize that we received it. I must say, I took the packet of Grove Street documents and put them in my file, and I don't have that letter in front of me. But I can grab it easily. And perhaps just recognizing and making part of our hearing record that we have received a letter from town council, Christopher Keefe, addressing the question of a number of legal questions that were raised. And and that will guide our decision-making when the hearing is continued. Any, everybody think I should get the letter out and say anything more about it?
I don't think so. I just, I'm thinking procedurally more than substantively. I just want to make sure it's in the record.
Yes. All right, so thank you very much. We do have that letter for the record. And it was in our, it was in our packets, was it not? I believe it was.
Believe it was, too, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay. All right, so so now we move to motions to carry out this request of a continuation, to continue the hearing to April 20th, and to continue the action deadline for this 390 Grove Street definitive subdivision to May 31st.
Moved.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Jacobs.
Second.
A second from Mr. Alpert. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye, so we have that continuation and that continued action deadline. Very good. So the other items on our agenda don't have a particular time listed, so we can just move on to the decision on the North Hill project to construct 75 new parking spaces along a portion of the existing fire lane and to widen the fire lane. So let me introduce those who are here for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before you do that, I just want to remind you that I am recusing myself from this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Owens, yes. So you have two attorneys, Evans Huber, a counsel for North Hill.
Yes.
And Rory Kramer, also counsel for North Hill.
Yes, I'm here.
And we have other individuals associated with North Hill. David Ma, who is the executive director of North Hill.
Yes.
And Roger Gurney, who is also associated with North Hill.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So our planning director has prepared a decision. And let me just make sure we're all set with any communications. Right, the the materials I have were those that were previously submitted and and the plans that were previously submitted. And no further communication from any town officials, unless I'm missing something. Is that correct? I'm not aware of any further communication from town officials.
Not from town officials, that's correct.
All right. I do want to say that I had contact with a resident of North Hill. His name is Phil Trusell. And also, we got, I got, and our planning director Lee Newman got an email from a resident of North Hill. Is Ross Whistler. And the concern that was raised had to do with the lighting. I reviewed two plans that indicate lighting and regret that I didn't focus more on this issue previously when our meeting, when our hearing was still open. Because the plans are really not helpful in telling me what the lighting fixtures are going to look like, whether they'll be adequately shielded, what the height of the lighting fixtures will be. And one of the plans references catalogs at which I suppose such information could be found. But I don't feel that it's a job of the planning board to do such research. And I feel that the lighting plan should have been more satisfactory so that we are satisfied that the lighting will not spread into the residences of those who live on North Hill. So I'm inclined to ask about having an additional condition in the decision to address the lighting. And our planning director Lee Newman has been in communication with attorney Huber, who had some wording for if we were going to include such a condition. And I think that wording has been shared with the other members of the board, has it, Lee, or?
Yes, I received it late, so I sent that out by email to everybody. It's not part of the original package. But I did write my email at about 6 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, it might be, it's not very long, so I might read it to make sure everyone has had an opportunity to know what's being proposed. It would be inserted after the current condition 322. And it would say, lighting for the fire lane and new parking areas shall be designed and installed so that, to the extent reasonably possible, the light is directed downwards and shielded from impinging directly on adjacent units or balconies. This condition shall not obligate petitioner to change the location of the light poles. The light poles, little tiny dots you can barely see, are shown on the plan, if you're careful and, you know, use your magnifying glass. Excuse me, so I'll keep reading. Shall not obligate petitioner to change the location of light poles as shown on the plan, nor to undertake light shielding measures beyond what is commercially reasonable. Petitioner shall submit documentation to the board demonstrating compliance with this condition. So I invite comments or questions from members of the planning board on this or any other issue that you may have with the decision at this time. And if you think that we need testimony from individuals who may be tuned into our meeting, zoomed into our meeting, we could reopen the hearing and hear from them. But my thinking was if we were satisfied with such a condition, that might not be necessary.
I don't know that it's necessary for this. I'm prepared.
All right, so let me turn to you, Mr. Block, any comments or questions?
Not at this time regarding this item.
Mr. Jacobs.
I'm satisfied with that added condition and the rest of the decision as is. I'm happy with it.
And Mr. Alpert.
Um. Well, if Mr. Block and Mr. Jacobs and you are satisfied with this language, I will be okay with it. I was a little bit concerned when I read it about some of the conditional language. I mean, I was fine with the condition not obligating the petitioner to change the location of the light poles because that's a major undertaking. But to undertake light shielding measures beyond what is commercially reasonable and to say, to the extent reasonably possible, the light directed downwards and shielded from impinging directly on the adjacent unit or balconies, I found troubling mostly because these, this was brought to our attention by a resident of North Hill. We're talking about light that is impinging into the units that are occupied by the residents of North Hill. And I was a little concerned about having the petitioner, who is essentially the landlord, more than the landlord, it is the recipient of what is essentially an interest-free loan from the residents of hundreds of thousands of dollars each, to say that they aren't as concerned as I might wish them to be about the light that goes into their units, that they want this language in there to protect them against if a unit owner complains about the light going into their unit, they're being able to say, well, it's not a condition of our special permit, we don't have to do anything about it. I was, I would not have put that language in. I would not have limited it to commercially reasonable. I.
Madam Chair, when Mr. Alpert's finished speaking, could I?
Yes. I will recognize you, Mr. Huber.
I would expect to hear from the attorneys for the petitioner. But I would be happier if if some of the language were not as I don't know the words that I'm looking for here.
How about vague?
Well, you.
And giving an out for not, for not making sure that light doesn't go into units of the residence of the petitioner's property. Basically, the petitioner's. Units of the residence of the petitioner's property, basically the petitioner's tenants.
Okay, well, I will recognize Mr. Huber to speak to this issue and to help us understand what you even mean by commercially reasonable. And also, I want to ask, if I may. When, at what point in the process will the documentation be submitted to the board demonstrating compliance with this condition? Will you be providing us with a more detailed lighting plan before the installation? What are, what are your thoughts? What are your intentions on that?
Okay, so there's a lot of different items to respond to there. So with respect to Mr. Albert's comments, it's certainly not North Hill's intent or practice to tell its residents that. We, our special permit doesn't require us to take into consideration your concerns, so we don't intend to do anything about the lighting. In fact, Mr., that's the reason we asked Mr. Ma to participate in the meeting tonight, because. He is intimately familiar with what happens at North Hill when residents have concerns, including concerns about lighting. And that, that, that has come up in the past and North Hill has addressed it in a way that's satisfactory to the residents. So this is not North Hill turning its back on its residents because it's not obligated to do something for them. With respect to the, the precise language, you know, I'm the author of this proposed condition. And the reason I put in words like reasonably possible or commercially reasonable is because. Well, it's because I'm a lawyer, but it's largely because.
I'm trying not to hold that against you, Mr. Huber.
I know. It's a cross I have to bear, but. It's, it's because. We would like there to be some sort of objective standard here there. And, and so, you know, we're going to submit this and to address the chair's question, we're going to submit documentation showing. You know, in greater detail, what the lighting is going to be along this fire lane and on the parking area, you know, the height of the poles. And the cone of light that's going to come out of the poles, of the lighting fixtures and that sort of thing. And we believe that that will demonstrate that the drawing that you all, members of the board, may have seen from this resident. Which implies that light is going to be streaming onto the balcony of the third floor of the, of these units is not accurate. And that's not the way the light is actually going to. You know, come out of these light fixtures. They are going to be shielded. They are intended to, they are not the same. As the light fixtures that are on the rest of the campus, which is what this resident used as an exemplar in his drawing. These have better light shielding for, you know, light flow from behind them, for lack of a better word. In the direction of the, of the residential units. So we are, are confident that when we present this information to the board. That you will agree that we have done a reasonable job of masking the light into the. You know, that might otherwise be seen by the, the residents. I don't think it's physically possible to completely eliminate all illumination. I mean, if you're in one of these units, you can see light from the parking area. It'll, it'll be there. So we wanted, the reason I use. Reasonable, that, that word a couple of times is because I want, you know, us to be able to say to the board, look, this is what we're doing. These are reasonable efforts to address this concern and presumably, or hopefully, get your agreement to that effect. So that's, that's my response. With, with respect to your question. Madam Chair, as to when we plan to provide this information, I, I think. The short answer is we haven't fully thought that through, but my expectation would be that we would do it before we install these things. Because we want to make sure that we're not, you know, presenting you with a fait accompli, which you then think is not acceptable. So my expectation would be that we'd be presenting you this information. Prior to installation to make sure that you agree that what we're doing is appropriate.
Okay. Couple of things, since Mr. Whistler's communication has been referred to. I think it would be a good thing for us to open the, reopen the hearing for one purpose. To make this communication by email from Ross Whistler dated March 1, 2021, a part of our record.
Don't move.
I, can, can I speak to that?
Yes.
That. I. I, I think that everyone should recognize that. We went to the design review board, had the project approved, we published notice of the hearing, we had the hearing, the hearing was closed. This issue didn't come up. We had a draft decision that. Lee Newman and I worked back and forth, and there's only one issue that we wanted to discuss, you know, apart from this light issue. And we found out about this, we just found about, about this this morning. And I think that it's just not. Reasonable to reopen a hearing and accept. Accept something, you know, reopen a hearing to, to accept the document. I mean, you, you have the document. And we always intended to have lighting that doesn't shine into people's units or balconies. And we will provide that. And so, and we were asked to, you know, prepare a condition to, to be added to the decision, which, which we've done. So I, I don't think the idea of reopening the hearing is, is necessary.
Madam Chair.
You do understand, Mr. Kramer, that we're talking about reopening a hearing only for the purpose of, of taking this email communication.
Can I just say, as a matter of procedure, Madam Chair, I did make a motion.
Oh, you did, Marty? Okay.
I, I did make a motion, so procedurally, I think we need to find out if there's a second and then have the discussion.
All right, let's do that, of course. I missed the motion, sorry. So do I have a second? All right.
Second it then to. Have a discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and to approve this would require three of our, three of us to vote in the affirmative. I ask about whether there is discussion. Mr. Albert has his hand raised.
Yes. I'm going to agree with Mr. Kramer on this. I don't, I don't think that it is appropriate, given the timing of. When we got this matter and the fact that we are presented with this new section 3.21. Which is in front of us to address the issue. I don't think we need to open the hearing because the petitioner has, has shown a, a willingness. To, to. Add a provision to the decision to cover the issue. As I said, I would, I would, I would rather that we struck the word reasonably on the second line. I would rather that. Second sentence and. After the word plan, so that, so that the phrase nor to undertake light shielding measures. Beyond what is reasonably, what is commercially reasonable be taken out and just leave that vague. On the other hand. I recognize that with Mr. Owens not on this matter. I believe this matter now requires a unanimous decision, and so I will not stand in the way if the. If the other planning board members disagree with me and they're happy with the language as written, I will vote to include it. And to approve the decision with the language as it, as is presented here. I, I, I agree with Mr. Kramer that it's not really appropriate to reopen the hearing at this, at this late date.
Is there any further comment on the motion to reopen the hearing? And then we can turn to the decision and the wording of this condition. Mr. Block.
I just have a question. When the material, in particular, the email correspondence, which included this new section 3.21. Is, when that's published online and included as part of our packet, is that regarded as being in the. Otherwise published and part of the public record?
Yes, I would say that the communication regarding that condition would be part of the public record. Do you agree, Lee? It's already being put out?
Well, that, that, that email is, is not part of the packet yet. It didn't make it to the packet. That email came in at six o'clock. The correspondence that we received from the North Hill resident is part of the packet.
Right, and we have, you know, now we have a fairly close, if not. A workable. Provision, solution for this, that it seems like the board generally agrees with. On that basis, I don't think that we need to reopen the hearing, in addition to the comments raised by the vice chair.
As long as I've had a motion and a second, I will call for a vote. Mr. Jacobs.
I vote aye.
Mr. Block.
Nay.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And I, as chair, vote aye, but the motion fails. And so we moved to the decision. And. Does, are there any other wording issues or any other. Concerns or questions regarding the decision from the planning board members?
I think there's still a question about 319D, but I think we're focused now for, on 3.21, correct?
Oh, yes, you're, thank you for reminding me of that, 319D. There was a communication received from. Attorney Kramer, I believe, isn't it? Regarding. Wishing not to have that. Yeah. No, I copied it.
But we're still, we're still focusing on 3.21 right now. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
Well, yeah, well, we, we're focused on the decision as a whole, but you're right, there were two issues. One is. The. An added condition or, and the other is 3.19D. And what I'm, what I'm having a hard time finding is the letter or email that. Was concerning 319D. So if. Lee Newman, if you have it, could you explain what was requested?
It's, it's actually an email from Roy Kramer. What, you want to ask, have him go through what he's, what he articulated in that email rather than, rather than me?
Yes, I suppose so. And I'm very sorry, I'm so good at copying everything and making sure I have all the paper and I can't find that one. Mr. Kramer, please speak to your request.
Sure. Obviously, we're aware that the, the major thrust of this whole application has to do with widening the fire lane. And to adding parking spaces. We said in the, on our application, you know, we noted that we also, it's time to replace a cooling tower that's been there for 18 or 20 years. And we asked that, you know, that not be part of site plan review, that's just part of normal maintenance, replacement and repair. Then, when Lee Newman and I were going over the decision. We reached agreement on every issue except this, this one, where I had asked that 3.19D be deleted. She said, well, take it up with the board and suggested that I write, you know, this email. And what section D says is that before anybody can park in any of the new parking spaces. That. We need to file a letter from our acoustical engineer, confirm that the cooling tower has been installed. Such that its operation at any time of the day or night shall not exceed the applicable Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Town and Region standards. Well, our acoustical engineer said. We don't give letters like that. What we do is we do studies and we tell you what we found. Or we can talk about specific things, but we don't give what they perceived as a, an open-ended guarantee forever of what's going to happen. So what, and, and besides, to, to have that issue possibly hold up. The whole project just didn't seem to be fair under the circumstances. So what I outlined in the memo, which we suggested that I send to you are some, some facts. Where, it's true, site plan review. Looks at a project that must protect adjoining premises against seriously detrimental uses. By provision of sound and site buffers, among other things. Well, this is not a seriously detrimental use in that it's a replacement of the same kind of mechanism. That's been in existence for 20 or maybe even 40 years since North Hill opened. The second thing is that the standard of review that the state and the town uses is that. If you have a piece of, a new piece of machinery that increases the sound level by more than 10 decibels over ambient. Then, and it's 10 decibels measured to the property line or to the nearest what's called sensitive receptor, which is a residential house, let's say. Then that's a concern. They, they want the change in decibel level to be less than 10. So we looked at the. The existing cooling tower, you know, and the, what the manufacturer's data says. And then we looked at the manufacturer's data on sound for the new cooling tower. And the new cooling tower at the location of the cooling tower itself. Is five decibels above what the old cooling tower was when it was new. So it's only five instead of 10. But the standard is more than 10 decibels from the property line, which in this case is 265 feet away. Or the nearest sensitive receptor, which is 460 feet away. And as we all know, sound dissipates over distance. So that if the differential is only five decibels at the machine itself. When you go 260 or 460 feet away, it, it's going to be less than five. And it could well be zero. You're just not going to hear anything at that distance. In addition to that. North Hill purchased, I think what's called splash attenuation filters. Which is another, you know, kind of sound attenuation device to place on the new cooling tower. Which is going to further lessen the sound. So that instead of it being five decibels more than ambient. It'll be less than five. And whether it's four, three, two, one, or zero, you can't tell, you know, without doing very costly testing. But given the, the facts here, we thought that this information would be enough to. Allay any concerns that you would have. And. You know, let, let us proceed and not put the, the sound of a replacement mechanical system. In front of, you know, as a precondition of, of parking. And you, you already have a paragraph in your decision, which is a standard paragraph that you. which is a standard paragraph that you always put in, that essentially says, notwithstanding whatever we, the planning board says, you know, and for the particulars in the decision, the applicant still has to comply with all other federal, state and local rules, laws and regulations. So that, in the unlikely event at any point someone complained that it was determined that it exceeded 10 decibels, we're legally obligated to fix that. And that's already in the decision. And, you know, there are three other requirements in 3.19A, B and C of what has to happen before we can park the vehicles. So under these circumstances, which unlike, like a new backup generator, which is noisy, being placed 20 feet from a property line or, you know, Needham Center, you have a replacement cooling tower on a 60-acre parcel where the closest house is 460 feet away. And we have, you know, our acoustical engineer saying, well, we can't write this letter. We don't do those kinds of letters. So that's why we thought that, you know, the explanation, the memo would would be satisfactory to the board to delete 3.19D. And everything else in the decision is, you know, we've worked out with the board. So that's our request.
Right, well, why don't we stick with that issue first, rather than combining the two issues? And I have my ideas and wish to respond, but I want to turn to other board members first. And I see Mr. Alpert as his hand raised.
Yeah, I was going to raise the question, but Mr. Kramer already answered the question, which is that we do have a provision in the in the decision that states that they need to comply with all of the state and local regulations and that it's, the noise level is covered by that. And so I'm comfortable with not requiring a specific letter to be filed with the building inspector. As Mr. Kramer points out, if somebody complains about the noise level, then they will need to test. And if they exceed the state and local regulations, they will need to correct it. And so I'm comfortable with that. I just want to ask the question where Mr. Kramer says that the test is based on the property line or the nearest neighbor's building, which is 400-odd feet away. Wouldn't the closest building be the North Hill residences?
It's other property. It's not the site itself. It's your property line.
I would expect that if we got a complaint about the noise, it would be from a North Hill resident. And not from a neighbor who's more than 400 feet away. And so that's, you know, I just raised that. But again, they're required to meet the regulations and the statutes. And I don't believe that they need to submit a confirmatory letter to that regard. And so I'm comfortable with removing 7.19D, because that's all that it goes to, whether or not they need to submit a letter for the file.
And Mr. Alpert, just for clarification, 3.19D refers to the applicable Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Town of Needham Noise Regulations. So it doesn't require something that goes beyond the town and the state regulations.
But it's asking for a letter that Mr. Kramer states he may not be able to get. Because a letter that's certified by a certain engineer, and the engineer that North Hill has hired has said, I'm not going to sign that letter. And that's a practical consideration.
Okay, well, I do want to address that issue, but let's turn to Mr. Jacobs.
Yeah, I'm also comfortable, but I do want to make sure that the memo that Roy put together and prepared, which to me, I find convincing, I think it should be, we made sure it's part of the record and it's referenced in the decision.
Okay. Yeah, that's a thought, because I was thinking about.
Roy, do you have any problem?
No, I don't have a problem with it. I would object to you reopening the hearing to take it, but it's fine to include that in the record.
Isn't it already part of the record?
I think if we're going to make it part of the decision, referencing the decision is going to be part of the record.
Adam, just at the point of clarification, normally, the only thing that's part of a record is what's accepted at the hearing. That's what constitutes a record, what information or testimony is accepted while the hearing is open. And what we can do, and we have done this in other decisions, is just indicate that we receive certain information after the close of the hearing. And I can list Roy's memo as well as the email that we received from the North Hill resident. That's the point's preference.
That seems reasonable.
Okay, so apart from whether the letter from Mr. Kramer should be made part of the record in a formal way by reopening the hearing or referred to as a communication outside the record, do you have any comment, Mr. Block, on the proposed 3.19D? And whether it should be deleted or reworded? But you're muted, Adam.
Isn't that ironic? An audible issue and I'm suddenly having an audible issue. Madam Chair, thank you. I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Alpert, that, and support removing this requirement based on what we've already discussed, based on Mr. Kramer's email and all the supporting information that he's provided. So I support removing that requirement, that condition.
So I hear the members going in the direction of somehow accepting this letter and deleting the section D. I want to express that I, all the information that was in that good letter is not provided by an engineer. All we're looking for, and I think that section D can be reworded, to say, first of all, that it doesn't say that the cooling tower has been installed, because I hear Mr. Kramer by saying, look, we've got this roadway and parking space, and we can't get this question answered until the cooling tower has been installed. To change that, to say, "Letter from petitioner's acoustical engineer confirming that the cooling tower has been designed," is what I'd say. And then I'd say, "Such that its operation at any time of day or night is not expected to exceed the applicable Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Town and Midam Noise Regulations." Because I understand that an engineer is not going to guarantee and say, "Shall not exceed" as if it's a guarantee. But to change it to say that it's been designed, and the engineer could go into whatever detail they want, similar to Mr. Kramer's letter, and that would be perfectly satisfactory, and that would meet this condition. And I really would like to see something like that in the decision. And I wonder if with those changes, my colleagues might feel more inclined toward including it in the decision. Mr. Alpert?
I raised the question whether that information isn't already part of the record, because the design of the cooling tower and that information was presented to us. And, you know, I can't say for certain where it's listed among the documents, but it's probably among the documents that are defined as the plan, which is what we usually do. We have a list of documents and the appropriate documents comprise the term "the plan." And then we have a condition that the project is being built pursuant to the plan. And so I don't see where that's necessary.
Well, let me respond to that. I don't think that your memory is quite right on that. I think the last time, during the last hearing, there was a discussion about whether it was even the business of the planning board to concern ourselves with the rebuilding and relocation of the cooling tower. And I think the decision, after that, after that discussion of whether it was, you know, something we should pay attention to at all, a planning director prepared a decision that makes it clear that we do feel that we have a role to play here in amending this site plan approval to approve the relocation. But we did not discuss, nor did we receive, the kind of detailed plans that would enable us to evaluate the conditions that are set forth here in 3.19. And Lee Newman, am I expressing this correctly?
Yes, that's correct, Paul. We don't have that level of detail.
Okay.
We have information about the size of the tower and the pad size on which it can be located and general parameters of it, but that level of detail, we don't have.
But not the information about the noise level?
No.
Okay, in that case, I would just like to ask Mr. Kramer and Mr. Huber if they're okay with the language suggested by Ms. McKnight.
Roy, do you want to respond to that, or do you want me to?
Tell me again what, well.
Well, what I, in the second line of subsection D, where it says that the cooling tower has been installed, I would say the cooling tower has been designed, such as, and then we go on. The next line, instead of saying "shall not exceed" the applicable regulations, it would say "is not expected to exceed." Based on the design, it's not expected to exceed. And that's essentially, Mr. Kramer, what you said in your letter.
Yeah, I think that getting the acoustical engineer to to talk about how it's been designed is probably going to be problematic, because they would say, well, you know, we we measure sound, we don't measure design. And, you know, they're concerned with the sound and not, you know, how the machine is put together necessarily. What I can do is, I still would like to have that deleted, but what I can do is send you this memo again, or an addendum to it, giving you the mechanical specifications about the decibel level for the existing machine and the the proposed machine, you know, or some, you know, some summary from the acoustical engineer that says what I've said in my letter. But I just think that they would balk at design. You know, I could see them saying, you know, it's not expected to generate sound levels above mass DEP thresholds. But I just think this.
What word would you use other than "design" for the plans for the cooling tower?
I don't think they would say "design." I mean, the manufacturer has certain spec sheets of, you know, what the sound level is expected to be. And, you know, that's something that I can get an attached to this. But I think that the, what the acoustical engineer would say, all right, the only thing we can do is we can do a study of conditions with the old cooling system for $X,000, and then do a second test with the new cooling conditions and say, the decibel level was X with the old tower, why with the new tower? You know, then they might say it's expected to generate acceptable sound levels. But then you're several thousand dollars into additional studies done by the acoustical engineer, and you still are not going to come up with a definitive statement. So, I mean, the information that I gave to you in the memo, you know, I got that from VHB, but.
All right, you got that from VHB. Would members of the, if people are thinking at all that we should have any condition, should the condition be that an engineer provide that documentation? And shall provide the documentation that the cooling tower specifications are such that its operation You referred to specifications rather than design, Roy. I'm searching for wording that will give us this letter, not from an attorney, but from an engineer.
I'm still not sure, Madam Chair, that we need this. Because what, we're talking about 75 parking spaces. We're talking, and we're talking about replacing existing, an existing piece of mechanical equipment, HVAC equipment. We need to have a sense of perspective about, I think, micromanaging these kinds of details. Well, we've already heard sufficient information that the specs of this thing are less than what's currently admitting from the existing piece of equipment. We also have already heard that there is, that there is an affirmative obligation on behalf of the property owner to fix a problem within the standards already set by the state.
All right, I hear you, Mr. Block. We're going to need four votes for this. So let's see where we are with other members. Mr. Alpert?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So Mr. Kramer is making a representation that the manufacturer's specifications provide something. The manufacturer's specifications are not part of our record at the moment. And they're not going to become part of the record, because we, I see no reason to reopen the hearing. But we can have a condition that states that the applicant shall file with the building inspector or with the planning board a copy of the manufacturer's specifications for the cooling tower. That's all we need, is to have, we have a representation as to what the specifications say. It sounds to me like those specifications are in writing, that they have something about, you know, whatever. And let's just have it in our file. That's all that we need.
I would say that you, instead of specifications, you talk about the sound data. Because the sound data is going to give you the decibel level that you want to see.
Is the sound data in a separate document, Roy? Or is it in a document that's all the specifications of the cooling tower?
No, I.
The document that you're referring to, when you make.
I've got, I've got, I've got one page that is the sound data for the existing cooling tower. And I have another page, which is, says the proposed Marley cooling tower sound data. So I have two pages, one for each, one for each tower. And you'll see that one of them says 85, and the other says 90, so there's a difference of five.
So I'm comfortable if we just have that in our file.
I can send that to you.
Well, I would like to have, I think it makes sense to have a condition that you will provide it to us for the file. That's all.
That, exactly. I think we're coming to a reasonable conclusion here, that that will be provided for the file. But would you want to follow up with language to show that the operation at any time of the day and night? the operation at any time of the day and night is not expected to exceed the applicable clause of Massachusetts?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's what it's going to show, Madam Chair. It's just going to show exactly what Mr. Kramer just read to us. That, that.
And then with.
Decibel level that presently exists and there's a certain decibel level that the cooling, that the new cooling tower is designed to, to emit. And, and again, if it's too loud, we're going to get a complaint. Somebody's going to complain to somebody. And if it's not too loud, nobody's going to complain.
All right, it's, all right, let's go in that direction if that is okay with everyone. Mr. Block, you were saying, let's just delete it. Let's not do anything, but are you satisfied that we can do something of this that we seem to be going towards?
Yeah, I, I'm finding that, you know, that we include a reference of that, you know, my preference would be just to delete it. I don't think that it's necessary, the provision itself. But if it's, you know, but at maximum, you know, you know, as Mr. Albert's saying, you know, we could make reference to the, the documents that, that Mr. Kramer is referencing, you know, in the decision. But nothing more than that. An engineer can only, can only opine on a standard based on, I guess, conducting a series of tests on the old equipment and the new equipment, probably to the tune of between 10 and $20,000. And I don't think that it's necessary in this circumstance, based on the information that we have, to require the property owner to go through that rigmarole based on, on this sound data.
Right, if, if, if no other member of the planning board at this point has anything further to say about this, I'll ask our planning director if from what she's heard, she has language that can be used that to substitute for 319D that addresses the concerns. Lee, you are muted.
While Lee's thinking, I also have possibly a simpler, easier thing, which is delete 319D. And I will, I will, I will redo my March 1st email. But I will, I'll make reference in that email to the, these two sound data sheets, you know, exhibit one and exhibit two, and attach it to the email.
Well, I don't want it redone. I, I, my position's the same. I found your memo convincing, your presentation convincing. I just want it to be part of the record and I want the decision to refer to that memo as part of our decision. That's what we considered and that's what convinced me.
Okay, and that's obviously fine with me, Marty.
And it seems like there's two ways to do that. One is to reopen the hearing and accept that memo. And the other is to make a condition that that memo be provided to us.
I'd like to make it part of the record, but I suppose I go either way.
And, and I, I have an answer to, to one thing, Gene, which is, you'll remember that at the hearing, you, you wanted a, a letter from me with the dimensions of the existing pad and cooling tower and then the proposed.
I do remember that.
Tower. And I sent you that letter and it's listed on page three of the, of the draft decision as exhibit eight, and it just says, submitted for the board's deliberation after the close of the public hearing was the following exhibit. It says exhibit eight, letter to the planning board from, oh, from Evans Huber, you know, dealing with the dimensions of the, the cooling tower. Make it exhibit nine.
Lee, you were suggesting something along those lines. Do you think that will work?
And just let me open, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yes, I think that will work. Or I, or, or if Roy wants to update his memo to attach these two documents to it, we can make that exhibit nine.
Yeah, I like that.
That is part of the record, Marty.
As long as that's the only change to the memo, you're just attaching two exhibits, fine. I don't have any problem with that, but I, the, the memo that, that I saw and that you argued tonight is what's convinced me that, let's move it along. Let's go. That's enough.
And my feeling is I would prefer, I would prefer that you just accept the memo that I did, so it's one less thing I have to do. So, but it's up to the board.
Why don't we just require that Roy give us a, a new letter which attaches these two documents that he's talked about? And then we'll, we'll include, and I will include that as exhibit 10. So we'll have his memo, which is exhibit nine, and we'll expect him to deliver us a new exhibit 10, which will have a letter which now brings, which now brings into the record these two attachments.
Fine.
All right, can we have a motion to approve to grant the site plan special permit amendment, to approve the site plan special permit amendment that's been requested and to and to prove the decision with this one change.
We still have to insert paragraph 3.21. That's another change.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgetting what I was, what was so important to me at the start. Yes. Paragraph 3.21 as, as set forth in the email. Was there any change we were looking for there?
Madam Chair, if I could be heard for, if I could be heard for a moment.
Of course, a change. Just let me go back to what was said before, so it doesn't need to be repeated. I think it was Mr. Albert who wanted to delete nor to undertake shielding.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair. So Evans, Evans, let me just quickly state, as I said, if I'm the only one who wants that change, I'm not going to stand in the way. I'm not going to make the motion for the changes that I was suggesting. If there's another board member who agrees with me on, on those changes and wants to make that motion, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm fine with 3.21 as it reads.
Right, that, that is the only change to the language that was put forth that has been discussed. That is to delete nor to undertake light shielding measures beyond what is commercially reasonable. I don't, as Chair, I like to be the one who puts out motions. I'd like to ask if there's another board member who agrees with Mr. Albert's initial. Proposal.
I am not prepared to make that motion.
And I'll, so moved.
Right, so we do have a motion, so that is to add to the decision. I guess it's a good idea to, to vote on it and then move on to the decision to, to add, to make a change to the proposed condition 3.21 to delete the words nor to undertake light shielding measures beyond what is commercially reasonable. So I have a motion from Mr. Block. Do I have a second?
Oh, I, I thought, excuse me, point of war, I, I thought Mr. Block was, was agreeing with Paul Albert that the, that the language can stand as, as originally proposed by us. My.
I'll expound on what you're saying. Are you agreeing that the, that 3.21 can read as, as Mr. Huber drafted it, or are you making the motion that we make the changes to it? The two changes that I had suggested.
I, I'm moving as the petitioners have proposed.
Then, any change that I want to make, I'd be voted down anyway, so let's just leave it at that.
All right, well, then I think at this point, there's no, no reason to take a vote specially. When we take the vote to approve the decision, that vote would, motion would include the two changes, one to add section condition 3.21 as worded in this memo, and the other is to add to the list of submitted post-hearing submissions the memorandum that Mr. Kramer provided with, with the added data sheets, is that?
No, no.
Without the added data.
His original memo will be exhibit nine and exhibit, also there'll be an exhibit 10, will be a new letter with.
Exhibit nine.
Right, do I have that right, Roy?
Yeah, just, just a new letter saying, here are the two sheets, not, not retype.
Right, exhibit nine.
Right.
Got Lee's suggestion, right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It works.
Well, has there been sufficient discussion so that the changes that we're talking about are clear? And we can have a motion regarding approval of the decision with the changes discussed?
I think, Madam Chair, first we need to approve the requested relief.
Yes, is there a motion?
Well, I, I usually, I usually actually read the paragraph, but I didn't make a hard copy, so I just kind of took myself off of the screen. I'm probably still on the screen, but I, I got to get back to the page that has it. So.
Eight six.
I move, I move that, that we, that we grant the requested major project site plan special permit amendment under section 7.4 of the Needham zoning bylaw and section 4.2 of the site plan special permit number 91-3, dated September 8, 2011, as amended. And two, that we grant the requested special permit under sections 5.1.1.5 and 5.1.1.7 of the zoning bylaw to waive strict adherence to the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.3, the parking plan design requirements of the bylaw, or specifically in section 5.1.3F to waive the parking space size requirement of six existing parking spaces. And in section 5.1.3N to waive the requirement to install bicycle racks subject to the planned modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision.
All right, we have the motion for the grant of relief. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I hear a second, so I'll take the vote. All in favor, Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Chair is aye, so the relief is granted, and now we move on to the decision. And, Mr. Albert, are you prepared to make that motion?
So I move that we accept the decision as drafted with the inclusion of the new section 3.21 as set forth in Mr. Huber's email to us. And that we delete section 3.19D and that we add to the list of plans two documents being submitted after the hearing. A new number nine being Mr. Kramer's memo as previously submitted and number 10 being a, a, a cover letter with the submission of the two sheets that set out the decibel information.
Well done, second.
Did your, did your motion include adding section, condition 3.21?
Yes, it did.
Can I be a nitpicker here, just to have Lee check the numbering in the decision? So that the new condition involving life be numbered correctly, because right now the version I'm looking at goes up to 3.23. So maybe this would be, maybe the noise one will be 3.24.
I, I, I suggested that it be 3.21 because it made more sense to me that that would require what is currently 3.21 to be renumbered and so forth.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's what I was.
Okay, that's fine, sorry.
Numbering as may be required. All right. Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes, Mr. Jacob seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the approval of the decision. Now we've come to a vote. Call the roll, Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
The chair is aye, and so we have the four to zero decision approving the decision. So I think we are all set now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Plan Board members for your patience and understanding. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, so. You know what I'm missing? I'm missing that nice big table we have, you know, in our meeting room. All your papers out in front of you instead of moving them from one table to another. But I know very well that the next thing is, as my agenda, which got tucked into the North Hill planning packet.
If that agenda item is complete, I am returning to the meeting. This is Ted.
Yes, yes, it is. Thank you. So now we move on to agenda item four, which is discussion of proposed dental use in the Center Business District at 32 Chestnut Street. And we have a, a letter from Attorney Jenta, who is present. And along with two individuals who have an interest in our discussion of this subject. Mr. Alfred Graymont and Ms. Catherine Pennington Klein. So welcome to our meeting. And George Jenta, do you want to speak to this issue you're bringing before us?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. George Jenta Jr. appearing this evening is indicated. We've got Al Graymont, who is the property owner, on with us, and Katie Klein, who is the dentist, who is the person who'd be operating at this spot. So, so we're here for an informal discussion with respect to the property at 32 Chestnut Street. That's the spot that for several years was occupied by the Art Emporium, which if you never were in there, was basically custom framing and art supplies. That's a decent sized spot. It's like 2,500, 2,800 square feet, give or take. And since Art Emporium closed back in the fall, you know, the space has been available and Mrs. Klein would like to move in there and with a dental practice and take over the spot and operate. There'd be a small dental practice with really just three people to start with. Ms. Klein is the dentist, an assistant, and then administrative staff. I can expect it would probably, if all went well, grow a little bit over time, but really we're talking about a small practice. Now Katie is a, she is board certified in orthodontics and is also on the faculty of Harvard Dental at Mass General Hospital. So she is well established and well knowledgeable. The reason we're before you this evening on an informal discussion is, under the bylaw, this sort of use would seem to be allowed by right, falling under the category of a craft, consumer, professional, or commercial service establishment dealing with the general public. And that would be my interpretation of the bylaws. It would fall under that category. However, because there is an existing site plan special permit on the property going all the way back to 1998, when Mr. Graymont added a two-story addition to the building at 50 Chestnut Street. Because of that site plan approval, any change in use has to come before the planning board. So I broached the issue with Lee and came to understand that the board has a concern or an issue potentially with this use. And most notably that this came up, this very similar use came up in 2015 with an application that went before the Board of Appeals. At the time, the applicant basically viewed the bylaw the same way I'm viewing the bylaw, as did the building inspector at that time. But the, but the planning board did not seem to view it the same way. And in their recommendation to the Board of Appeals basically argued that the dental practice on the first floor in the Center Business District was not an allowed use. So rather than going ahead and doing a full filing and bringing this before the board with spending all the fees on, you know, design professionals and the filing fee and all that, figured it would be better to have a conversation with the board to gauge if the board is still. to gauge if the board is still of the mindset that in no way, no shape, no form is a dental practice allowed on the, on the first floor in the downtown area. Now, with that as the backdrop why we're here, let me explain a little bit more why I do think that it is in fact allowed, other than going beyond the plain language of the bylaw, which does seem to allow it. And in particular, I want to talk about the position that the planning board took in 2015. Now, the category in the bylaw that I believe this falls under has at the end of it a, a sort of some limitation language, which is that, that the various uses are allowed by right, provided they're not enumerated elsewhere in this section. In 2015, the board interpreted that last part about not enumerated elsewhere in the section to mean that a, another provision within the section applied. And that provision basically says that you can't have offices on the first floor. However, you can have offices on the first floor for commercial sales or service. So in 2015, the planning board took that position, made a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals subsequently approved the use, finding in their opinion that in fact, it did fall into the craft, consumer, professional, or commercial service category, and that the exception didn't apply. And I have since checked with the building inspector, and he is still of the opinion that that category applies and that a dental practice on the first floor would be a use allowed by right. And so, you know, one of the issues is the question of whether or not a dental practice is a use enumerated elsewhere in the section. Now, it's important to know first off that it does say in the section, not in the bylaw. So you have to limit the review to the section itself. The only language that really can be drawn on in the section is that language with respect to office. But it specifically talks about office. And there's a significant distinction to be made between a professional practice and an office. Generally speaking, offices are not places where the general public visits on a regular basis throughout the day, every day. Offices generally tend to be places where you have workers that are employees or otherwise that basically do their work, maybe for the public, but not necessarily with face-to-face, in-person contact with the public. Even businesses such as insurance offices that have regular dealings with the public and might deal with the public face-to-face from time to time, do not do so on a regular basis, you know, every day that the business is open. So I think on the outset, there is a definite distinction between something like a dental practice where you're dealing with the general public constantly over the course of the day, every day that the business is open. Between that and another type of office use. More importantly, a dental office, even if it were to fall within the office provision in the bylaw, is more akin to a consumer service than it is to a regular office, inasmuch as it deals directly with the general public and provides a service directly to consumers. To this point, and as indicated in my letter, it is not dissimilar from various other uses that have been allowed in the downtown area, such as a financial planner or financial services business that currently operates on Great Plains Avenue. A number of real estate offices, I think there's four or five of them, just in the downtown area alone. Or an optometrist, which is very similar. I also note that in addition to the dentist office that was approved in 2015, there's also another dentist office on the first floor existing currently at 20 Chestnut Street. And so dental practice, to me, is more akin to a commercial service. So even if it falls in that category, it should be allowed by right on the first floor. And I think one good way to look at this is to compare it to something that we have plenty of in the downtown area. And that is hair salons, barbers, nail salons, spas, and the like. On a quick survey, I counted nine hair service establishments, five nail service establishments, and a med spa in the downtown area alone. Now, all of these different uses have one thing in common. They provide a service with respect to a body part. Here's a hair, it's hair. Nail salons, it's toenails, fingernails, maybe, maybe skin. The med spa certainly covers a wide range of services relating to the body. A dentist provides a service to a different part of the body, but it's still a part of the body. So it's fundamentally along the same lines of these type of uses. So I would say that it basically is, is a, a similar type of use that falls in that consumer service type of category, and therefore would be allowed. In, into that end, I actually also note that currently, there are Walgreens in the country that actually have dental services as a part of their operation. So we now have, it's a shift in sort of the business model so that retail locations are now offering dental services as a part of their, their services they offer. Similarly, if you look at businesses such as Gentle Dental and Aspen Dental, and where they generally have their locations, they are virtually always in prime retail areas. And in fact, with respect to Gentle Dental, in both Quincy and in Waltham, their locations are in prime commercial strips on, you know, basically business, busy commercial streets, not unlike a downtown area. Quincy one is located in Quincy Center, and the Waltham one is located in Waltham Center. Now granted, they're different towns and.
I say uncle. Uncle, I give up.
Okay, all right. All right, so anyway, so obviously, you have the position. So, so before filing, we needed to talk to the board and gauge and see, is the board receptive to having this use? Knowing, yes, it's not the ideal use. We all would love to see retail, we'd love to see the town return to what it used to be. But the practical reality is, that is not what's in the marketplace anymore. And moving forward, you sort of need to be a little more flexible with respect to certain uses, especially a use that seems to fall within the bylaw, fall within the use category.
So we're undoubtedly read the materials that Mr. Jenta sent us as well. And so I, I think it's time to turn to the board members. Mr. Jenta, unless there is a reason that you, and you had in mind that Mr. Graymont or Dr. Klein would, would address us to move on to board, board comments and questions. All right, so Mr. Alpert, I think you see your hand raised, is that right?
Sure, I, I'm, I'm going to agree with Marty and say uncle. So 2015, three current members of the board were on the board in 2015. Two members have since replaced prior members. So I was on the board in 2015. We submitted our suggestion to the zoning Board of Appeals. I reviewed the materials that Mr. Jenta presented to us, and they included our well-written argument as to why a dental practice should not be allowed on the first floor in this district. And both the building inspector and the zoning Board of Appeals disagreed with us. I am very reluctant to say, well, the zoning Board of Appeals allowed a dental office, but we, but we're going to stick to our guns and not allow a competing dental office be there. I, I, you mentioned 20 Chestnut Street. I wonder how they got in there without getting approval unless they got zoning board approval.
Yes, I wondered that too, yeah.
You know, it, it, it's, it wouldn't be fair to Ms. Klein or to any other dentist, excuse me, Dr. Klein, or to any other dentist to say, well, if the zoning Board of Appeals allows it, we're just not, we're still not going to allow a competing.
This is a specialty.
I, I'm just going to say though, Mr. Jenta, that I assume that there were some body parts that you feel would not be appropriate to be on the first floor of a building to be serviced in the Sector Business District. But we won't get into specifics about what those might be.
I, I think that's an overlay district.
So.
All right. So. Uncle on that.
I will, I will, I will vote for this use.
Do you, do you have a comment or response to Mr. Alpert's comment?
Who are you asking me?
I was asking you.
All right, yeah, I'm persuaded.
Right next to Mr. Alpert.
I, I'm persuaded by George's argument. It's fine with me.
To Mr. Owens, excuse me, Mr. Owens, you're persuaded by George's argument. That's, I'm sorry, I was.
It's what he said.
All right, thank you, sir. So who wishes to speak next? Ms., Mr. Graymont actually has his hand raised. Is there some, something you wish to say, Mr. Graymont?
No, 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 thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy with what George had to say, and I believe what he had to say.
Okay. So Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Block have not commented. Do you have any comment or question?
I think I did comment.
You just said uncle.
Yeah, that's, that's my comment. I agree with George.
I. I could, I have to say, I appreciate the creative interpretation of our overlay district. I think here that, that Attorney Jenta presented a a very creative argument as well that I, that I agree with. It's, it is, it is true that, you know, a dental practice is not something that, you know, we would prefer, that we would necessarily prefer in, you know, ground floor, otherwise retail. And yet, it's not our place to necessarily, to really interfere in, in the market. And especially where the town has already, by another board, granted such a permit effectively for another dentist. It would be arbitrary for us to prevent, Dr. Klein, is that right? From proceeding with her practice. So I join my colleagues and look forward to the application at a future time.
All right, can I just ask a question now of Dr. Klein? Which is, is the intention to have this office be open full-time, 40 hours a week?
Yes, that is the intention.
Okay, because the one at the corner of Pickering seemed, I, I'm not sure when they're open. It seems to me that they're, they're not there very often. And which took me totally by surprise. So I would hope that this would be open basically on a full-time basis.
Yes, yes, I am a full-time worker, and my patients really need that. They need to be, have me accessible so that I can help them at all times.
Thank you.
And can I ask you a question? How do you, how, how are you planning to handle the window space in, in, in this, in the facility? Is that going to remain, are the windows going to remain open and transparent? Or what, what is your plan for the storefront in the windows along, along the storefront edge?
Yeah, so we're talking about that. So the windows would be nice to have privacy within a window with a overlay on one. And then in the waiting area or the reception room to have that open so that everyone can see in, and vice versa, and allow sunlight.
Thank you.
I, I want to present my own ideas here. I, the thing I have a concern about is when, when we, when Section 3.2.2 lists this use, craft, consumer, professional, or commercial establishment, and then says, and not enumerated elsewhere in this section. I question what section is being referred to? Is it the broader Section 3.2, of which 3.2.2 is simply a part? And I look at the definition of medical office building. And I know it uses the word building. When you look at the definition, and it seems to clearly describe the type of use that we're talking about here. Medical clinic. Medical, one minute. I thought I, medical office building. Oh, excuse me, it's a different word, medical services building. Premises with occupancy limited to doctors' offices, dentist's offices, orthopedic services, et cetera. But not those licensed as a clinic. And of course, clinic is expressly listed in Section 3.2.2. But I assume, I know that clinic is especially state-licensed type of facility. And Dr. Klein, you don't describe your practice as being a clinic by that standard, do you?
No, I don't think so.
Medical. Medical clinic is, in our definitions, a facility providing medical, surgical, dental, et cetera, to persons under license as a clinic under Massachusetts general laws. And I understand there is some special license for clinics that. Perhaps you're not familiar with that license.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any license like that.
Yeah, but you presumably don't have a clinic license. So, but, so it seems that the definition of medical services building premises with occupancy limited to dentist's offices, et cetera. It seems to me that is your use very specifically. And and Section 3.2 in other districts mentions that use. It just doesn't happen to mention it for that district. So if I'm not mistaken.
But Jean, if I, if I may, one of the defining characteristics of a medical services building is that the entire building is limited to those different uses. So it's, it's a different, in a way, it's a different use generally to start with. Because you're dealing there with a collection of uses where the entire building is subsumed by that collection of uses versus the independent uses themselves. Sort of like the, the medical services building is almost like the sum is greater than its parts. Right, you've got all these different type of uses that all get collected into one, you know, larger use. And of course, it makes sense because generally speaking, when you have a collection of various medical uses, you have a lot different traffic and parking load than you would have with a mixed-use building. Where you might have, for example, one medical or dental or other type facility combined with offices or retail or whatever. When you put them all together in one building, it's a much more intensive type activity. So I think you can distinguish that actually as an entirely separate use right out of the gate, so to speak.
In many of our districts, we do allow mixed use. It often requires a special permit to have the building include more than one use. Don't always say that it's a standalone building.
Right, and, and in fact, I believe that permit was actually granted for this property already as a part of the site plan. Because this, this, this.
Type of use, yeah.
Right, yeah.
But since, I don't know, it's defined term in our bylaw. It seems to match exactly what's being proposed here. Does the phrase, it not enumerated elsewhere in this section? Do we have to confine ourselves to 3.2?
Well, on that, on that point, I would say you do because it says this section. And unless it, unless there's a, a clear intent for a larger interpretation, you, you take the, sort of the plain language says this section.
Jean, are you suggesting that in order to have a dental office in this district, it has to be part of a medical office building?
Well.
We have, we, we have other medical offices standing separate within the district, including the dental office on, on the corner of Pickering and the dental office at 20 Chestnut. And, 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 and I know Dr., Dr. Handle has an office on, on Highland Avenue.
Right above.
Near, near Walgreens. And, and now you're saying that all of these offices are illegal uses? Because they're not part of a medical office building?
Well, I guess I, I hadn't given the thought to the fact of whether that definition is, only applies to premises where an entire building is used for medical services. So, I don't know, please, Lee, I very much appreciate your guidance on this.
Well, I would say, I think, I think that term was introduced at the time we created the medical overlay district. And I, I'd have to. And I, I'd have to go back, and that's actually covered through an overlay, that's, and that's done in section three point six. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that that term is used in section three point two. I, I'd have to go through three point two and identify all the uses within that section, which leads to all the other districts, the foundational districts. But I, it was created specifically for the medical overlay district for the hospital. And that was the first time the term was used and defined.
Thank you very much. That helps a great deal so that, um, if, if we're talking, whether we're talking about three point two-two or three point two as a whole, there is no specific, there's nothing more specific than the word professional, that's used in the section that Judge Jenta quoted, to describe a dental practice, apparently. Um, and that's what worried me, that we were missing something. Okay, so it's not like we have to make a real decision here because we're not being asked right now to amend the site plan. Uh, I'm, um, but it appears this is the direction we're going in. Um, I'm certainly sympathetic to the concern about retail, uh, not being a viable use as it once was in our downtown. I tend to think we should be rethinking in general, um, our downtown rather than kind of sliding around our wording and trying to say, well, you know, really, we should allow it. But we're not there right now as far as rethinking this whole area. So those, those are my thoughts, and I don't know what more, uh, we can say. And whether that gives you enough, uh, guidance, Mr. Jinton.
It's very, very helpful, Ms. Sherman. Thanks.
All right, then, um, we're, so we're finished with that agenda item, unless any other planning board member or any other participant wishes to say anything further?
I just want to say, Dr. Klein, I look forward to seeing you when you, when you bring your application for the, for the amendment to the special permit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time.
Thanks for your patience tonight.
Okay, very good. I, uh, I'm gonna miss the art store very much. I used to go in there and buy things. Not that I'm an artist, but I think, uh, we, we miss, we're gonna miss our, our retail stores, but what can you do? All right. Thank you, Dr. Klein. And you know, um, I'm imagining the family with children coming to the orthodontist and also going to the toy store and also getting an ice cream. And I don't think that your proposed use is one that will be detrimental to my downtown. So I didn't want to have that implied at all.
That's great. I'm an Edum resident and my husband and I have lived here with our young family for eleven years. We love this town and I'm looking forward to taking care of a lot of people here. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We're all set with that agenda item and so, um, I guess we do have things to discuss, issues to discuss with regard highway commercial one rezoning and planning study and, and, um, project update. I don't think it's so much focused on that, you know, this is a substance of our zoning, um, articles that are already advertised for hearing. It's the process, is that correctly?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to have it on there as an agenda item so that anything that came up relative to moving the Muzzy Site forward, you know, we could openly discuss. So I just want to update you, um, a little bit in terms of where we are. Um, I have been working with Judy Barrett, um, and we have the framework now for the fiscal impact study, um, developed, um, with the analysis done. Um, um, just the analysis component of it. And there's a meeting that I have scheduled with the working group, which involves Adam. Jean, I think you're attending, and involves Mary Ann Cooley, the town manager, assistant town manager, and finance director, if he's actually going to be available, and Judy for tomorrow. Just to kind of walk through, um, with the group, um, the underlying assumptions that embed the analysis and where those assumptions have led across five different land use scenarios that match the urban design plan that Natasha had developed and link in now with the traffic study using fiscal twenty-one data. So we have that set for tomorrow. And my goal for the meeting is to have Judy presented to the group, get their questions out on the table, make any adjustments to the underlying assumptions that are appropriate so that we can finish the analysis piece and then, then Judy can prepare the narrative portion of the document, um, that will articulate the assumptions and what the conclusions of the report are. Um, and have that available, um, for the meeting on, on the sixteenth. And I, and maybe Jean, you'd like to update them a little bit, um, I, about the question that you had me ask Chris Heap? Um, and his response on getting an opinion, um, at this point on, um, the vote on that article.
Yes, um, the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development issued a set of guidelines, uh, with regard to the amendments to chapter forty A, having to do with the, um, you know, majority vote for certain, uh, uses and two-thirds vote for other uses. And, um, those, um, guidelines I found very interesting and helpful. And I'm, I'm, you know, I thought I had my packet so well organized and, um, no, now I can't find the guideline. But the basic idea is this. If, if, if you have a, a particular question about particular articles right now, um, the, the, the Executive Office stands ready to respond within thirty days to, uh, particular questions about quantum of vote. And particularly on an issue, uh, particularly on this issue, uh, the question of whether, um, how, um, multifamily housing, uh, for the Muzzy Site is eligible for a majority vote, has to do with whether the Muzzy Site is an eligible location. And the words, there are certain used words used to describe what an eligible location is. And it's that particular issue that DH, getting EO, Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development confused with D H C D. But, uh, one of those two agencies stands ready to respond to the question of whether a particular site is an eligible location so that a, a, a mere majority vote can be used. Um, so I think I, I suggested that, uh, it would be wonderful to get this opinion from this state agency. And since, um, the, the housing choice provisions of the Economic Development Act expressly say that this shall be interpreted by this agency. It seems to me that, that agency, you know, opinion has, has a great deal of weight. And so, um, Chris Heap said he would, uh, seek that opinion. And then I think there's also, um, the, the issue of whether, um, so that goes to whether we needed two, two-thirds vote. So suppose the answer is, no, this isn't what we had in mind for eligible location. It really doesn't fit our criteria. That means that, of ill, we've separated the, um, uh, we've separated this zoning for the Muzzy Site into three articles. One is for the, um, business and commercial type uses, the office, the R and D, the retail. Um, and the second is to add to that mix, multifamily residential with certain conditions and caps. And the third, which is typical of how we do things, is to, um, to rezone the actual area for the district. So if we get an opinion that says this is not an eligible occasion, then that second article about the multifamily would, would also require a two-thirds vote. Even though we've separated, it would require a two-thirds vote. And then, uh, I think there's another procedural question of, um, what is the usual, what, what would be the typical way of handling it? And is our moderator, um, would our moderator allow? Suppose we don't get the, suppose it says, yes, we can do the housing by majority vote. It's on a warrant, majority vote. But we have to get the other rezoning, the other two articles by a two-thirds vote. Well, the, the, the majority vote to have housing in a district that doesn't even exist in our bylaw, uh, for, for an area that's, there's no area in town zoned for it. It is just not going to be effective in any way. But perhaps it would create confusion. So the, because the sensible thing to do if we didn't get a two-thirds vote run on the first article is to, uh, move to withdraw, I guess is the word, the second and the third article. So, um, I believe, Lee, is it correct that we're exploring with, um, with, um, our moderator on how to handle that situation?
Yes, um, it's been suggested, I have not reached out to him yet, but I'm going to reach out to him this week. Yes, and find out how he'll handle that situation. It was recommended, I think, by Ted. And I am going to follow up on that.
Yeah, so there's, that's, those are the two, uh, things we're exploring to make sure that goes smoothly at town meeting and we know what quantum vote we need.
I understand. I do, I, I, I don't think I understand where the eligible location fits in. Is there anything about eligible location in the statute itself?
Yes, there is. Um, and, um, let me just grab, grab something that I may have, um, put back in, in a file that will just take a sec to get.
I think areas of concentrated development, including town and city centers and other commercial districts and cities and towns and existing rural villages, is I think is how it's phrased, Jean.
That's right. There is a definition that was added to General House, Chapter Forty A, Section One A, eligible location, and I think you just, uh, much quoted it, Lee. Areas near transit stations, including rapid transit, commuter rail, bus, ferry. And of course, the Muzzy Site is not within any of those. Uh, then areas of concentrated development, including town and city centers. Well, you might say that, you know, certainly our downtown, our Needham Heights, town and city center. And, but then it says other existing commercial districts in towns. So is this an other, um, existing commercial district?
I see.
That's the question because, um, then the provision of, uh, the new provisions added to section five that allow an amendment to a zoning bylaw to allow by special permit multifamily housing or mixed-use development in an eligible location can be done by majority vote. So that's, that's the question. Is this an eligible?
All right, thank, that helps me. Thank you.
I think.
The phrasing on eligible locations comes from an entirely different section of the bylaw. So what do they call them? The, um, planned?
Planned residential development?
Oh, um, chapter forty A, section nine, um, the, um, smart growth, I think they're called smart growth zoning districts. Um, and, and, excuse me, I should have known the answer to that before I even talked about it. But, um, it, it grabs words from another section that really isn't applicable because we don't have, uh, such a district. Chapter forty R, oh, I know what it is. You know chapter forty R?
Yes.
Yeah. It, it grabs the words from chapter forty R. And so that phraseology of an eligible location has been used in that section.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, so that's just to let you know the work that's being done, uh, to prepare for town meeting. And, and you know, we have our hearing coming up, of course. And we'll have the, the fiscal impact study to present at that hearing, and we're going to have kind of like a rehearsal for that, uh, tomorrow. Is that the idea?
Yes.
Just for clarity, sorry, there's an echo. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Is it your, is it our opinion that two-thirds majority is required for both the, uh, the commercial component and the residential component?
Well.
I'm unclear on what's.
We're not clear about the second part yet.
We're not clear about the second part.
Okay, I didn't think that we were. Okay, that's fine. Another.
Question is that there's another provision that says you can't combine in one article, items, you know, uses that require two-thirds vote with, with majority vote uses. That's expressly prohibited, so, which is why we separated them in the first place.
Except, I did think, I did think that the exception was you could include the housing in with the commercial and just accept that the whole thing is requiring a two-thirds vote.
I think, I think, I think that we're, that we're still trying to sort all that out. Chris, Chris Heap is, Chris Heap is reaching out to people to try to get an answer. And I think, I don't think we have a definitive answer yet, Adam.
I understand.
We're in the process of trying to get there. It's difficult.
Another, um, another, uh, update on this topic is, uh, a town meeting member apparently held a, um, uh, Zoom meeting this evening with a large number of people and, and promoted the meeting on, uh, on Facebook and other social media sites perhaps. Obviously, I wasn't able to attend that because of our meeting tonight. And, uh, and yet I'm waiting to hear back from others, uh, who were able to attend to here. I don't know if they're making an alternate proposal. Obviously, they can't because they're limited by the time and the requirements, uh, for town meeting, but I do expect that there will be some organized perhaps opposition or alternative suggestions for us come, uh, March sixteenth. And I'll, you know, share any information I have, um, you know, as I learn it.
Fine, that's what March sixteenth is for.
Um, so I just want to say, Marty and, and, not Marty, Adam and Jean, over the next week or so, I'd like to work with you. We talked about taking the one section of the dimensionals and, and trying to frame that into a series of tables. Um, so I'd like to work with the two of you over the next week or so to get that done so that we have it, you know, in the form that we would like to use, you know, that potentially utilize it.
Yeah, so that when we make a presentation on the sixteenth, we have those tables to use. Is that the idea?
Well, that, if you want to use them for, for presentation purposes, fine. But I'm trying to think ahead that if, if that's a better way of, of putting it into the final language of the bylaw, I want to get it going now so that we're not scrambling with that at the end and in a panic. So I'd like to be working with the two of you to put that together.
Is that, is that much different than the table of, uh, that, you know, that you and I are already prepared for one tab was for the uses, the other was for the dimensionals?
I think we see it as being different. I think we're talking about maybe in the, in the residential section of the bylaw, we took out, we basically had, um, a defined, kind of like a defined situation, and we gave what the dimensions for that were. So it might be, you know, what's allowed within the one hundred feet of Goal Street and one hundred feet of Highland, and what are those dimensions? As of right. And then another table is what are those dimensions in that buffer zone by special permit? Then another table might be what are the dimensions, you know, beyond that zone, allowed by right and by special permit? So that you're able to kind of see the components and what the dimensional requirements are within those components. Um, as opposed to doing the one table we have now with, um, all the footnotes, which tends to confuse it. And that's pretty much how we laid out the residential when it became very complicated. You know, um, so that was, I think, was the strategy we talked about.
I'm on board.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just to try, not only to have a clarity in presenting, but as we go through the years and use this bylaw.
Be easier.
I think those dense footnotes.
Right, it'd be much easier to understand.
Very hard to understand. You need to hire special attorneys.
What's wrong with that?
The Full Employment Act.
So we're continuing our work and, and I'll be glad to work on that, Lee.
Okay, thank you.
What's next?
So what do we have? Is there anything else to report of correspondence? And we do have minutes? Anything else, Lee?
I, I have a couple of things I just wanted to update you on and to get some feedback from you on, on process, since I have all of you together. The town's basically gotten a grant to basically put some charging stations in for electric vehicles and some of our municipal parking lots and parking lots under which the planning board has jurisdiction. So in all those cases, you know, we have site plan approval sitting in place. So I want to, and, and the introduction of these, you know, charging vehicles is going to require some modifications in terms of striping and configuration of some of those lots. So my question to you is how do you want that, generally, how would you like me to manage that? Is that something that you want to do as a de minimis change? Is that something that you would feel comfortable if the overall number of parking spaces doesn't change that I implement through the insignificant change policy? I just want to get some feedback because the, the town is going to be looking at making those changes in terms of how you would prefer to process that.
Well, under the insignificant change policy, you always have the discretion to bring it, bring an issue to us, right?
That's correct, but because this is, if, but this is going to be implemented across a number of different parking lots, I'm, I'm coming to you and asking you, how, how would you like it done?
Well, I speak for myself only, of course, but I, I don't have any problem if it starts off as insignificant change. And if and only if you feel you need input from us, bring it to us.
Okay.
And I, I'd say it should just go forward as an insignificant change and you take a look at it, except in, in these circumstances. If we granted a parking waiver and we're going to lose a parking space, or if the amount of parking just exactly meets the threshold of the required parking and there's no extra spaces. So, because once you devote, see, I've been dealing with this in our condominium, we want to put in a, a charging station. And to do that, we want to put in, you know, one that has two stations and one, you kind of get two hoses, you might say, on one device.
Right.
But that means devoting two parking spaces, which might otherwise be, be guest spaces, to, to being available for people to pull in and out and charge their cars. So if in any particular case, we're going to lose parking spaces, and that would make the premises not comply with the parking requirement or not comply with the waiver we granted, I, I kind of think that should come back to us. But if that isn't the case, then it seems insignificant.
Lee, I'm confused. Are these just municipal lots? You said this is a grant to the town.
Well, it's, it's happening on municipal property. I think some, I think one of the sites is, you know, the, our building, the P S A building, I think they're looking at maybe some spaces in the chapel lot. I, I can get a list of, why don't I get a list of the affected properties and I can share that with you.
Those are all subject to special permit?
Um, I think most of the, most of the new ones are, are subject to a special permit. I was approached by Hank just today. I got an email. He's starting to process. I think Alex is beginning to pull some of the special permits for him to take a look at.
Yeah.
What are, what are conditions are across the, across the lots that he's interested in implementing this?
I, I remember with the P S A building, we dealt with the parking spaces considerably.
And there, and that property's under parking waivers, so.
And also, you know.
You're probably, you're probably looking at increasing maybe the waiver. So it may actually trigger a process that's, there, there, there might be some instances where I can do it insignificantly and other instances where it's not going to be possible just given the facts on the ground and the facts within our permit itself, so.
And you'll let us know, which is.
I mean, I, you know, zoomed in to this meeting, you know, we're talking about this. And like that P S A building, the parking is already extremely tight. You know, how many times have you gone there to try to pick up something at the planning office and not been able to park and had to park over at the DPW building?
Not at all in the last year.
Not at all in the last year, yeah. So.
I, I guess the question comes, are we really taking away a parking space? Or are we just limiting that parking space to, to an electric car? It's still a parking space. It's, you know, it, it's like having a parking space that's devoted to handicapped or having a parking space that's, that's devoted to compact cars. It's a parking space that's just devoted to electric vehicles. So we aren't really reducing the number of parking spaces.
Well, that's not my understanding. My understanding is the electric charging station is only supposed to be used in those times when somebody is actually charging their car, so they.
Parking their car to use the charging space, to use the parking station. Cars being parked.
How do you enforce that, Jean? How do you stop somebody in a gas-driven vehicle from parking in a parking space that's available for a charging station? You can't.
Well, you put a little sign up and say, no parking unless you're charging, but.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Well, you know, that's a question, I don't know whether that's going to be for state law or if that's something we can do in the bylaw. I mean, right now, there are hefty fines if you park in a handicap space and you don't have a handicap placard.
Right.
And so the way to enforce that is to have hefty fines for parking in an electric charging space if you, if it's a gas-driven vehicle and you have to give out tickets.
Yeah, but you haven't reached the tipping point on that. You're going to need a lot more electric vehicles before you get support for that.
We will get there, though.
In 20 years.
You know.
Lots, lots sooner than that, Ted.
Yeah, let's talk about it. If we're not going to lose parking spaces, it's insignificant. Can we make that the line at the moment?
Sure. I, I assume that's when Lee will bring it to our attention.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the specifics with Hank. At least I have a framework to work on. The other question I want to ask you is, is at the Hillside School, I was approached by, you know, Steve Hopper. This is a school where it was just the temporary location for fire and police. And embedded in our decision was a requirement that when they were all done at that location, that the site would have to be returned to its pre-existing condition, which was a condition that, you know, existed at the time when the school was there. There, they've indicated that, that they would prefer not to return it to that, to that configuration because they don't anticipate that it's ever going to be used again as really as an elementary school. And what they're looking at now is that perhaps the school administration building might utilize it as a temporary location. So they're proposing actually to utilize, to basically utilize the existing area that they kind of flattened out for where they're locating those, the temporary facilities that the fire department was using and convert that into parking with some other changes. So the question was, what kind of approval does the planning board want to have on that? I would imagine that it requires a modification to your existing permit and a presentation to you of what the alternative is, but I just wanted to confirm that.
What do you, what do you want to?
Was that clear?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I go over there quite a bit. It's not very far from where I live. You know, there's a playground over there. And it's a place that people walk, to go for a walk with their dog, et cetera. And of course, there are people who live right there on the street that provides access to the property, who naturally would be concerned about how much traffic there's going to be by any particular use of that property. So we, we should have some meeting where people come before us and tell us what they're going to be doing.
Okay, well, I don't know. I think I'll let Steve know that and that you, and you'd want to do it as a formal amendment so the neighborhood would be notified of the change?
Yeah, yeah.
I think so.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Especially, I don't want to just take, take away the requirement that it be brought back to its pre-existing use. I'm fine taking away the requirement, but I want to substitute for it what their anticipated use will be, not just the blanket. You, you don't have to bring it back.
After comment from the neighbors, yeah.
Okay, fine. So I'll tell him that he needs to come in basically with a, with a reconfiguration of the parking in terms of how he's anticipating it.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Lee, any, any news at all on the, the barrier being re-erected for the Pollard School at the outlet onto Dedham?
No, but Marty, I really, it hasn't been at the top of my radar screen.
I can imagine why. I understand, but, you know, just, just send them a quick email or something because it's been forever.
Okay, the barrier, okay, fine, I will.
Is that it, Lee?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, before you said of revised minutes, Alex and I working together managed to make, make sense of everything. And it's the minutes of February 3rd, 2021. Do you want to move to accept these minutes? And these are the minutes of the so-called community meeting. So we thought it was a good idea to have, have accept these minutes and have them on our website and all before the meeting on the 16th.
They looked okay to me. I'll move to accept them, as is, with the changes.
Any other? Do we have a second? You're, you're muted, Adam.
I haven't yet had a chance to honestly review those minutes yet. But I will, which I, which I can do and get you any additional comments probably tomorrow afternoon, but I won't stand in the way of the rest of the, of the board approving the minutes.
And I'll second them.
I wouldn't be there, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay, so if you wish to accept the minutes, I'll call for a vote and for a three, vote to accept the minutes. I hesitate to leave Adam completely out, but I'm, as far as making any changes then, I mean, we could, we could, we can revise a set of accepted minutes at a, at a subsequent meeting. We can do that. So the difference, but what would happen if we accept the minutes is then we'd be able to put them on our website as the minutes of this meeting in case anybody cared to look at them. And we could always revise them at a later time. Does that work for folks?
It's fine.
All right, so all the, I will call for a vote then on, there was a motion and a second, I believe, to accept the minutes. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So we do have those minutes, the understanding that Adam Block will be reviewing them and if he has changes, we'll consider the changes in our next meeting. All right, so I think we've concluded our business.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, before we adjourn, I just noticed something. I wasn't at the meeting on February 3rd, but at the end it says it upon motion made by Mr. Albert. It was roll call vote. It, it was voted to adjourn the meeting. I obviously didn't make that motion.
Oh. My goodness.
I think I, I think I moved to adjourn.
Mr., it says Mr. Owen.
It was elected by Mr. Owens.
But, but who is the one who may?
And he did.
I think I did.
Yes, because you were moderating that. Yeah, all right. So if everybody's, so that was the discussion before we, let's call that the discussion before we took the vote. So there's another, so it was Mr. Barak.
That's a very technical change.
And now finish the vote. I forget where we were with the vote. Should we begin?
Motion to adjourn. I, I just pointed out a typo, that's all.
We're voting to adjourn.
We're voting to adjourn.
Okay, we took care of the typo. All right, thank you, fellas. Thank you, fellow.
Thank you, everybody.
Not at all.